We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the September 30, 2024 work session of the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Kevin Cook. Serving as the chair this year. Joining me today is Commissioner Aaron Mays. Good morning.
Morning.
Commissioner Bill Rippon. Good morning.
Morning.
County Councilor Mr. Record.
Good morning.
And with this morning, we have a presentation lined up by the historic Heritage Hall renovations and everything at Stormont Vale Event Center. So turn it over to you.
Good morning. Commissioner Kellen Seitz, Stormont Vale Event Center with Oakview Group. This morning, we wanted to present to you our ongoing plans and renovation project that we are doing as part of the 2024 CIP allocation for that space. So we were awarded back at the 2024 budget cycle about $300,000 to renovate Heritage Hall. And that initially encompassed our HVAC system, some new chair upgrades and window treatments, and hopefully moving into some of the other pieces like the gazebo renovation, new fencing for the line of demarcation area, and some restructuring of the building itself. So today, we're here to present to you not only where that project currently sits, but the ultimate vision of that project, the design renderings that were produced by the architecture company, and some progress photos of kind of where we're at. So we'll get jumping in here, maybe. Oh. There we go. Okay. So pre-renovation state. If you recall being at the Heritage Hall prior to our renovation, it hasn't seen a ton of work since, you know, the 70s and 80s. So you've got the wonderful mint green ceiling grid paint there and some of the mustard yellow wall paneling for the sound deadening boards. So a lot of this space hasn't really been touched in quite some time. So you'll see, here's the overall design schematic that the architectural group came up with. What you'll see in these photos, and we'll go in detail here in a little bit as we get further on in the project. But this portion up here is where we spent a lot of focus on redesigning the space for more functionality, more storage, and some of the elements that our event space users have requested from us in the past. Heritage Hall primarily, over the course of the past, you know, decade or so, has been pretty much used for weddings, private party events, small banquets. It has a capacity of around 350 people when we get tables and chairs in there. The capacity space for the building is quite a bit larger than that. But to produce an event in the space, we're kind of around top end, around, excuse me, about 350 people. And one of the things that, excuse me, came out of some of the feedback from our event users and event producers in that space are things like, you know, bridal suites, things like groom suites, additional storage areas for our infrastructure for the facility, and then some more useful space. And what we focused on here is creating not necessarily a kitchen that you would cook in, but a prep kitchen or a catering kitchen, if you will, with a significant number of electrical drops, some utility in there, some plumbing in there so we can do three compartment sinks and plug in a bank of about five or six hot boxes and be able to serve both plated and catered meals and buffet meals out of that space. So this was the color design palette that the architecture group put together. As you can see, we're sticking to some of the neutral themes for the space. We wanted to create a space that upgraded the historical preservation, but also added some more modern amenity to the space. So you can see, these are some of the design renderings as we look south in the hall. This would be if you were standing at where the old stage used to be, looking towards the south end of the building. What you'll see in these design renderings are repainting of the ceiling grid, all the ductwork into that kind of charcoal, dark charcoal gray color finish. And then the ceiling and the walls all would be kind of a muted down white color. And then all of those sound panels in the ceiling will be wrapped in new white fabric. And the sound panels on the back walls, the side walls, and the north wall will be designed in that color schematic of the grays and charcoals. So as we look back towards the north end of the building, you can see we've removed the stage out of that space. There used to be a built-in stage there. The reason for removing that stage is to create more functional and usable event space. It also increases the amount of square footage that we can place event production and infrastructural items during the production of the events in that space. So you'll see wainscoting along the bottom, about four feet of that entire wall. That wraparound on the right side of this picture is the women's restroom. On the left side of the picture is the men's restroom. On the left side also encompasses the groom suite, which is right on the backside of that wall. When we're looking at the center of the wall, that left door opening will take you into the catering kitchen. And then that center door opening takes you directly into the new bridal suite that has been built out in that space. And as we transition outside, the old gazebo needed quite a bit of work. And so that is in the process of getting its removal taken place. And that will be about the first week of November as we coordinate some of the heavy machinery that we have on property for the production of some of our other events that we have going on that time of year. In addition to that, if you look up here in this corner, where we'll get a better picture of that on this next slide, that is another gazebo that will be built for an outdoor bar area. That location used to house the HVAC system and a lot of the ground-mounted portion of that system that will be poured over with a concrete pad and now become an outdoor bar space. So this will be the frontward, if you're looking east at that center gazebo. This is where most of the ceremonies will be produced for any of our weddings. And then there again is the bar rendering for just outside that eastern wall of the space. So we, as we were going through the renovation process, obviously, the first and foremost of this renovation project was the critical infrastructure. So the HVAC system, which was significantly past its useful life, but also, you know, enhancements to modernize the space, create more of that functional use, that capacity for us to, you know, host some of the catering aspects, the food and beverage aspects in the space, additional service areas and storage, and then maintaining the historical preservation of the space and the historical character that is there. Again, we started with around $300,000. When we take the two big ticket items out of that budget, it leaves us with about $165,000 worth of funding to do the design renderings, the pergolas, the concrete work, the construction and carpentry, the fencing, the painting, the electrical and the plumbing and any labor that's associated with that. So not a ton of budget to work with once we get past the HVAC system and some of the banquet chairs, right? One of the key elements here that allowed us to get this project to where we have it and will allow us to finish out the majority of the project and really bring in all the elements that I showed you in the design rendering is the fact that we have a lot of these labors on our payroll. So we have framing carpenters on our payroll. We have welders on our payroll. We have painters on our payroll. We have certified electricians on our full-time staff payroll and can do this plumbing work, electrical work, and keep our costs really, really low on the project, right? Because we're using that payroll labor as opposed to subcontracting this out through a GC or a contractor that, you know, is going to have built-in margins for revenue there on their end. So we've been able to do a lot of this work through our in-house teams, which I think is, one, saving, you know, the county taxpayers quite a bit of money on this project and allowing us to go so much further with the project than we would be if we, you know, had to hire this out as a GC project. So here on this screen is a little bit more detailed in a little larger zoom. Again, that groom suite is going to be just at the bottom of that wall with the men's restroom right off that groom suite. That catering kitchen right off the back there. And then some additional storage, which we use for, you know, tables, chairs, linens, any of our infrastructural equipment that is needed to produce the events. The bridal suite just off the center of that space, which I think is going to be a huge asset for us to continue to create more of that booking and more of that event content in the space. Some additional storage off the back of the women's restroom, the women's restroom, and then an IT closet there. So you can see, this is a layout rendering, not exactly the way we've had it for some of the events. But again, we can recreate the space and reconfigure this space to fit the client's desire or need. A lot of what we see moving forward is the catering piece and DJ set being up here where the stage used to be, where we can do buffet line service, or we can have pipe and drape walls to allow our catering banquet teams to bring out plated meals from right behind that curtain and create a bit more of an upscale space, right? So we touched on all of these pieces that's on the left here for the design elements in this renovation project. in this renovation project. Here's some progress photos as we look. Keep in mind, these are shortly after completing some of the drywall, so you will still see, this was our first pass at cleaning prior to one of the events that came in about a week behind these photos. Additional cleanings took place after that. But you will see, as we clean up some of the construction materials here, some of these progress photos, and that includes the wainscoting, the new drywall, mud and taping, and again, some paint. You won't see the grid painted in these photos. These photos were taken about two and a half, three weeks ago. That grid is currently being painted, started getting painted last week. We did have to stop and pause construction on this project just for a quick moment as we were producing a wedding in between here. I'm happy to report that the wedding was super thrilled with the new space and the new design, even though it's not quite finished yet, but it was finished for a look for them. Certainly, still a ways to go here. You can see these sliding barn door tracks that give us access into each of those rooms. Again, on that right side there, that's going to be an entry into the storage. That center door in the middle of the photo enters into the bridal suite. And this is a progress photo looking eastward if you're standing in the space towards that east wall. Some of the other areas that we didn't touch on yet are new glass and some securing supports there for those glass infrastructure and some of the doors. That's all getting replaced as well, might be at this point. Matt is managing this project from our team. Matt is our director of operations. A lot of the payroll labor on this project are out of Matt's department. So a lot of that, I guess, general contractor work would be run through our operations department for this project. So if you have detailed questions on kind of where we're at with the budget, where we're at with the projects and timelines, Matt can certainly answer a lot of those questions for you. But that's the end of the presentation, and happy to take any of your questions.
Questions?
Not so much a question, I'll make some comments, though. So I had the chance to walk through this a couple of weeks ago and was really impressed with the amount of work that you've been able to get done for the budget. And it looks so much nicer without that stage at the end. And then, once those acoustic panels, I don't know, they're not done yet, are they?
They're not.
Because they're, I mean, they're pretty ugly in their current situation.
They are.
So I'm glad that, also, those are, I don't know if you guys know, but they're expensive to buy, and so those are something you're creating in-house as well, so that's nice to see as well. And then, is the gazebo, what's the progress on that right now?
Yeah, so the gazebo's going to get removed when we have all of our heavy equipment on site for the demolition derby. So we have excavators, front in-load dump trucks or front in-loaders, and some dump trucks to haul all of that off as we remove that space. So once that gazebo gets removed, we do have some concrete work to do there to fill in some footings for the piers, for all of that gazebo infrastructure, and that will start right there, that kind of first week of November.
So you're packaging the rental of the excavator with the demolition derby?
Correct. We are trying to package everything with everything. If we have equipment on site that we don't have to re-rent or reutilize, we will use that during that time period. So we're getting more bang for our buck there.
But you're not going to be operating it while the crowd is there?
No. There will be no events taking place in Heritage Hall as we remove the gazebo.
Okay.
Good deal.
Could I see the slide of that gazebo again?
Yeah. Yeah. Get to that. The fence and the gazebo are going to be, oh, gosh. So the fence and the gazebo are all going to be red cedar, and that will, again, be produced and done by our in-house teams. So red cedar slatted fencing, red cedar posts and red cedar roof truss and joists with some ribbed steel panel sheathing on top for the roof structure, and then some cedar slats spaced out for the backside of that gazebo. The fence, I think, is going to make an incredible difference and impact for the events that we produce out there. If you've been to the space recently or have been to the space over the past 10 years, the fencing is essentially just a chain link drop fence, right? And that's for our line of demarcation for alcohol sales during weddings or private parties that allow us to create a space that guests are not supposed to be taking alcohol past that point. This fencing also creates that same piece of critical infrastructure for our food and beverage department, but also creates a visual break between agricultural hall and the Hotel Topeka at City Center. It creates more of an intimate space there. You're going to feel like you're in a little bit more of a secluded kind of outdoor backyard area as opposed to being amongst three large buildings.
In a parking lot.
In a parking lot, yeah.
And you'd think it'd probably cut down on the sound from Seventeenth Street as well. And is there going to be, are there going to be gates on it?
There won't be gates on the fence. There will be openings at two locations. So you can see kind of there, there's an opening on that northernmost sidewalk, and then there's another opening back here behind the gazebo as it exits out into the parking lot behind the hotel.
It might be worth considering putting gates on, just for when it's not being operated for security purposes.
Absolutely.
Your anticipated time of completion for the project?
So after we get the existing gazebo demoed in November, the next two to three weeks we'll be getting all the materials on site and start building the pergola, and then start in December probably on the fencing. So we hope to have this all completed by the end of the year.
Okay. And it's still on budget with the $300,000?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
The HVAC, we were able to get that installed yet?
It actually, they put the roofing curbs up last week. The roofing got finished on Friday. I've got mill rights in there today doing support structure up in the attic, down to the lower level so it can hold the additional weight. And then those units will be going on the roof on Wednesday, getting wired up and finalized for our event next weekend.
And again, the reason we put it on the roof was for?
To create additional space down below for this bar area as well as aesthetics and noise. So when we're having a wedding outdoors and those two air conditioners are running right in everybody's ears, it's very, very loud, and we'd have to shut the AC off to the building for them to have their event outside. And then, of course, immediately, everybody goes indoors for the reception, and with no real insulation in that building considered, it's just pure stone, it does heat up quickly, and it takes quite a considerable amount of energy to cool it back down to make the space comfortable for people. So we felt that this was a much more acceptable way to get that noise away from people and keep the aesthetics of that ground look. Much nicer, we're able to do some landscaping and really beautify that area down there. So it is kind of that look that everybody's wanting.
Should deter on some crime as well?
Absolutely. There is surely a safety factor in there, too, from equipment being vandalized.
How do you plan on using this gazebo? What will be its function? Is this like a?
Yeah, I think that the gazebo's use and function over the past has always been to host the actual wedding ceremony itself, right? So that will be its primary use for us going forward as we attempt to attract more of that wedding business. That'll be the ceremony spot. But also, it creates just another, for our summer events, for our fall and spring events where the weather is a little bit nicer, it creates another space that we could house a outdoor DJ under that space, we could host another bar under that space, we could host the catering lines under that space. We have enough infrastructure with the chairs and tables to produce both an indoor event and an outdoor event, so keeping the flexibility of that space open to really get as creative as we need to, or that any of our potential event producers and promoters would want.
It looks like it would function well, but I'm just not sure. Does much to complement the other building. There's something very stark about it, I don't know.
Yeah, our first attempt was to really look and dig in hard to see if the gazebo could be saved. And unfortunately, it's in a state that is going to cost us much more to try and repair and save the current gazebo as opposed to starting again.
So currently, the main entrance to the building is on the west side. Are you planning on using the east side since it's going to be so much better looking?
No, the infrastructure still lends itself a little bit better to using the west side as our main entry. We certainly can use the east side as an entry point or a main entry point, if you will, to bring guests in, and I think that's probably something we'll just have to look at on a case-by-case basis. But as far as the curb and the curb and guttering, the sidewalk pass, all of that are still set up to enter folks and guests off that west of the building.
Is anything being done to the west side? Last time I was there, I mean, the landscaping is kind of overgrown and just not looking real fresh.
Yeah, can you get back to that first photo?
Yeah.
So we removed that large tree, as well as this bush out here. We did plant several new plants out there, Shindel did. We removed the planters as well and put in some permanent landscaping features out there to really make that area look a little nicer, cleaned up that whole side. The plan would be to, on the front, which would be the north side of that building, eventually to remove a lot of those shrubs that are hiding a lot of infrastructure that isn't necessarily attractive, because that infrastructure has been, will be deemed unnecessary due to the air handlers getting moved. So we will be able to change some of that look as time goes on. That north side isn't in the budget for this part of it, but that west side was, and it has been cleaned up considerably.
Okay. And then, if I'm not mistaken, I think there was a lot of the old signage from the old branded Kansas Expo Center, the maroon and green. Is all of that going to be gone now?
Yes.
Most of it already is.
Yeah.
We started tearing that down.
But I think there was like a small marquee sign right out in the parking lot, is that?
There is a square. We are currently in discussions with a wayfinding sponsor for the facility, so our hope is to utilize that new wayfinding partnership to upgrade all of the wayfinding signs on campus, not just for land and arena and exhibition hall, but for the entirety of the campus. If that doesn't come through, we do have a CIP request that's a little further down the list, but it does encompass new wayfinding signage for the campus as a whole.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
No. All right. Well, thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
That draws us to our next item, which is public comment. If there's any member of the public that wishes to give a public comment this morning.
Henry McClure. I came down to talk to you about our continued discussions about the Metropolitan Planning Commission and the idea of having a Metropolitan Planning Commission and putting the MPO under that planning commission and making that revitalized. But it's very interesting what I saw today, half of Wyndham's just showing up. I hope this could pacify your need to build a saloon over at Ward Mead. But what I find most interesting is that, is this really the business of what we should be doing? Did we ever address the real need in the market for it? Yeah, people request this, people request that. I remember a tenant one time out of a kiosk about 200 feet had about 100 items. Well, somebody came by and asked for it. And I think sometimes in government, we try to be all things to everyone. Did we ever consider trying to lease this to an entrepreneur where they put it on and pay taxes, you know, as part of a triple-net lease, where they would sign a long-term lease and make the capital improvements themselves? Where they would pay as part of the rent, or in lieu of rent, the renovation dollars? Did we really ever investigate whether there is a market for it? It seems like the community is really up in arms about the hotel. And did the hotel fail due to the way this is run? And on top of that, I don't really recall, either of you, any of you guys, down, yeah, you were smart enough not to buy it, but I just wish you'd have been smart enough to talk to the mayor and the city council not to do it. It seems like sometimes the city of Topeka is pulling the county under, and we're all county residents. So it is much your responsibility to try to negotiate and talk sense into what we're calling now the hotel mentality. But this is a shame. We are in the income business, because the more income that comes in. What I'm hearing from the people is, well, that'd be great, some of your ideas are great, but then are they just going to squander it? But having an absolute triple-net lease on this property, it might have been the idea, and it's never too late to do the right thing. Yeah, these are great, but it would be great to not have it be the burden of the community unless there was really a necessity for it. Because if it was really a good idea, it would stand unsewn. So thank you for your time.
Any other public comment this morning? Any administrative communications? Commissioners? Anything?
Nothing for me.
All right, then. We are adjourned until Thursday.